Call a meeting to order, call 102. So this is a special committee meeting of the whole to deal with our municipal modernization challenge that the province has presented us. And I guess this is what, the first or the second meeting of our own group? We've now had meetings at the county level one, and at the South Grenville bilateral meeting, one meeting, and at the South Grenville trilateral meeting, one meeting. And I think this is our second meeting, where we're going to be looking at some ideas. So, those few words of introduction. Looking for a mover to approve the agenda as presented, unless someone has some suggestions for additions to the agenda.
So moved.
Okay, I have Councillor Cameron. And is there a seconder for the motion to approve the agenda? Councillor Hunter, those in favor?
Aye.
Motion is carried. Third item on the agenda is disclosure of pecuniary interest to the general nature thereof. Are there any disclosures this afternoon?
None here.
Hearing none. So we'll get straight to item number four, which is the discussion items. And during the period of time since our last meeting. First item on the discussion is efficiencies ideas arising from members of the committee. And I'm just wondering if anybody has anything that they've, that they would like to suggest at this point of the meeting?
I'll start.
Yep.
First thing I'd like to suggest is that we all sit around the council table. We know we have to, want to have the final say, but I'd like to hear what our staff recommendations is for each one of their departments, how they think they could provide efficiencies. And I know they've talked among themselves about IDs they have. I know our CAO's met. They've been meeting. I'd like to hear what they have to say. They're the ones that do it every day, so.
And would you like to put that on this agenda? Or are you sort of, want to give them an opportunity to think about it and come back another time?
If they feel they're ready to talk about it, or if not, go to their next meeting.
Okay. So that's the first idea coming forward. Councillor Cameron.
Yes, and I tend to agree with Councillor Hunter. Personally, I don't believe that we're going to have a lot of benefit about sharing between townships. Because, and that being said, there are a few things that could be shared. But as far as sharing equipment and sharing staff, for instance, and things like that. Everybody's going to want that piece of equipment at the same time, at the same snowfall, or the same rainfall, or the same drought. They're all going to want it at the same time, and somebody's going to be behind in doing what they have to do. So I, personally, I can't see where we're going to get a lot of cooperation that way. But I do agree with Councillor Hunter that I'd like to hear from the internal, from our staff as to how that can be motivated in their departments.
Any other opening remarks from anybody?
Just one, and it's more a question in regard to this meeting. And reading the newspaper on Wednesday, there was no mention of this meeting in the newspaper shown. And there isn't any on the website either. It shows 6:30 as the meeting for committee of the whole tonight.
I'm sorry, I don't have a good answer for that. I assumed it was on the calendar, and I even fully admit that I didn't check.
So that's just my concern is part of this process is about openness and transparency. It could be me that missed it. It's entirely possible. But looking at our item, I noticed that it wasn't included there. And today, looking at the township website, it shows the 6:30 one for tonight, but it doesn't show it. And in fairness, going through these discussions, one of the keys to me is openness and transparency when we have them. And if it's not advertised properly for citizens other than staff and us to be here, I struggle with that a little bit.
I know there was an ad forwarded to the journal, but as I say, I didn't check to make sure it was actually up here.
It very well may have, maybe I looked at the wrong one. They showed the other one.
Yeah, sure, press, I get it every once in a while. Sure, it was in. Okay, so there's an issue there. Possible or potential issue there, but the.
If it is, my bad.
Yeah, well. I mean, the, the, long and the short of it is the meeting's being recorded anyway.
And it is actually on the website as well, Mr. Mayor. I'm just thinking that again.
So when you click the community calendar, it shows it on the community calendar?
You go to agendas and materials for the meeting. It's there.
So, but it's not on the community agenda where? That's how I go to it, is that one shows the 6:30. It's the easiest route possible.
Okay, so anyways, as I say, the meeting is being recorded. Are there any other initial opening remarks here? Okay, well, I'm going to put two ideas on the table. And I'm just going to put them on the table for now and see whether or not they come up for deep, more detailed discussion at some point. And it may even be that I've got a wrong perception. And if I have, then it's important to get it corrected early. But, and I don't know that these are necessarily efficiency ideas, but one of the ideas that I'm going to look forward is a, came from a meeting that we had with the county auditor. And that concerns the idea of fuel used in corporate vehicles. And so the county auditor brings to the attention of the corporation the fact that he cannot reconcile something like $2,000 worth of fuel. Not a tall material on a $100 million budget, but points out to us that we should be having a system in place where every single liter of fuel that we purchase goes into a county vehicle and is used for county purposes. So I guess the idea that I'm putting forward is the idea of a vehicle fuel, I guess the proper word to use is a vehicle fuel reconciliation system or inventory system. Maybe we do that. I don't know whether we do or not. But the second thing that comes up is, do we track and know that every single kilometer that we put on a county, on a township vehicle, that every single kilometer is being used to the best advantage of the township? Or are their kilometers being driven that are not absolutely, totally pertinent and germane to a specific function or task that we perform? So just going to put those two ideas on the table and see where things go from there. Because both of them, although they are small things, they do nevertheless have a cumulative effect over the course of a year. So if there are no other ideas to put forward, I'm going to move to 4B, which is the organizational chart. And again, I had asked to have this organizational chart prepared just so that we, as a corporate body, as a governing body, had a baseline as to our HR department. In other words, how many people that we're employing. So we have that in front of us. I'm calling it sort of ground zero. And I'd just like to ask sort of one question, and I'll ask it through to the CAO as it pertains to the ones that are marked part-time, non-union. If you can give us some sort of an idea of what those three part-time, non-union positions entail in terms of either hours per week, or we describe them as half-time, or how we describe them? There are three positions there. If you'd like to shed some light on those three positions.
Certainly, Mr. Mayor, thank you. The part-time bylaw enforcement officer, as you know, averages 10 hours per week. We also have a part-time employee who manages our canteen operations in the arenas and also at the Legion Park. And she works.
On average, 24 hours per week during the normal winter season of the arena. During the summer, she only works about five hours a week.
So 10 hour, 24 hours per week, winter season?
That's correct.
Like, can there be, is there a start and a stop date for that?
September through till May.
September to May. And then in the summertime, you said, five hours a week?
On average, five hours a week, yes. She just basically oversees the ordering and works a couple shifts, and our summer students fill in the rest.
Okay, and again, with the start and stop date?
It all depends on the weather. Right now, the canteen isn't open. So last year it was open June 1st. So this year, it's mid-June until the end of August.
Okay, so mid-June, end of August. And then, do we have any obligation beyond those working hours? Or is this a straight hourly wage? When working?
It's a straight hourly wage.
When working?
That is correct.
Okay, all right. So that's the second one, and then there's a third one.
Yeah, the third one is under the Public Works Department. That's Les Reader. Les works at the landfill site, every Saturday morning for the four hours. And I believe he also fills in now and again when we're short-staffed in the Public Works Department. Maybe Jim could better answer that question?
Yes, certainly. He does work through the winter for us, on sidewalks and some sanding operations. And very few times will we have pickup during the course of the year, like yard waste and that sort of thing. He will come in and assist us there.
Okay, so what's the hourly, what's our hourly exposure?
There's, the Saturday is five hours. And then it all depends on mother nature as far as wear control is concerned.
Under the union contract, he's not permitted to work more than 24 hours a week. So that max is out.
Okay, so there's a limit of 24?
That's correct.
That's for all the made them? Like for Bonnie too?
Uh, yeah, I guess.
Yes, it is. Bonnie always remains below the 24 hours.
Because of the contract?
Okay, so that's our obligation on this chart. I just want to get a sort of a background on it. Now, there's no, there's no summer students on here.
No.
Now, is that because there are no summer students for this summer? Or is it because they just don't appear on this list?
We just didn't put them on the list, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so how many summer students would we have for this coming summer?
I can answer that, Deb, if you want?
Yes, please, thank you.
We have 20.
Okay, so that's 20 summer students.
We have 10 lifeguards.
10 lifeguards?
Three camp counselors.
Three camp counselors?
Three and a half Parks and Rec students.
Three and a half on Parks and Rec?
And three and a half at the water canteen, at the Legion Canteen.
Three and a half, what was the first?
At the Legion Canteen.
Okay.
Offering the canteen.
Legion Canteen. And what is our financial obligation there?
They are just on hourly wages.
Hourly, and they're probably at all at different rates, are they?
The majority of them are at minimum wage. There are some that are at a smaller, 50 cents more per hour for returning lifeguards.
Okay, so minimum wage or minimum wage plus X?
That's correct.
Right? And are they also limited in their weekly? Oh, they wouldn't be. No, because they're basically, are they basically 40 hours, or?
The camp counselors and the pool staff and the Parks and Rec staff are all at 40. Sometimes the lifeguard might make it, might hit 44, depending on how busy we are. The canteen staff are just, on average, between 10 and 15 hours a week each.
Okay, so 10 to 15 for Legion Canteen?
That is correct, yes.
Parks and Rec?
40 hours.
40. Camp counselors?
40.
40, and lifeguards?
Minimum 40.
Min 40. Okay, and then if they go over, it's just on, is it on a, if they go over the 40, is it, are we obligated to?
After 44 hours, we're obligated to pay time and a half, so.
It's after 44?
That is correct.
Okay, all right. And don't get me wrong, I mean, I want these kids to have jobs, and I know the programs, so I'm happy with the program. So I just want to get a feel for where we are. Okay, does anybody else have any questions with this chart? Just to sort of background information?
Yes, and it is exactly that. I'm just noticing that under Director of Operations, and I guess this is my error in assumption, which you shouldn't do. But I thought the Director of Operations was over the entire, shall we say, workforce other than the CAO, of course, and Deputy Clerk and Wendy's position. But I see that the Director of Operations is only over two departments, which is Roads and Environmental Services. Is that, is there a change, has there been a change there? Or is that never been?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. No, that's, that's the way the Director of Operations position was created and envisioned when it was, when it was developed some years ago, and it has always been over Public Works and Environmental Services.
So then I'm, again, everyone else reports to yourself. Is that correct? Thank you, that's all, that's all.
Okay, are there any other questions there? Okay, so, now, I know that, I know that the next item, when I'm coming to it, is going to be the action information item that we've got in the package. And I am going to get to that. But I wanted just, and it's a committee meeting, so I wouldn't do this if we were in a council meeting, but I'm going to take a few liberties with the agenda here because it is a committee meeting. I'm going to just take a minute to ask, first off, turn to the CAO to respond to the concept of having individual department heads coming back with some ideas for efficiencies within the departments. That concept that was put out at the beginning of the meeting by Councillor Hunter. And I know that you have a senior management committee. And so I'd just like to get your reaction as how you would react to the concept that was put forward by Councillor Hunter.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have indeed discussed this at senior management committee. Not, not in any very formal way because, you know, council was taking the opportunity to present their ideas and consider them. For the most part, I think everyone has a few ideas internally that would be relatively simple to, simple to implement. But I think we are in agreement that we need to take a bigger picture view of what services we're going to continue to provide and whether or not there's some efficiencies to be realized by taking a hard look at our service level. And I would be happy to task our managers with a list. I did actually get something from our building official there this Friday, that we would bring forward to you for those kinds of efficiencies. Our next senior management team is tomorrow afternoon. Probably won't have time to do it then, but we could do it in two weeks' time at the next one.
Okay, so I guess the response that I want to make to that was something like this. I mean, I think what we're really attempting to do here is trying to find ways of delivering our existing services in a more efficient way, not adjusting service levels. And I think the two are two distinct concepts. We all can recognize that if we weren't going to plow sidewalks anymore, I mean, that would be saving dollars. But it's not necessarily more efficient, and it definitely is a reduction in the service level. And I don't think that's what we're looking for. I think what we're looking for is to take that same analogy a bit further. How do we plow sidewalks in a more efficient manner? Or is it possible? How do we plow streets in a more efficient manner? Or is it possible? So that's the kind of thing that we're looking for, rather than adjusting service levels, in my mind. So I think what we're going to do is leave Councillor Hunter's concept of having individual department heads come forward with their recommendations so that those recommendations, while they may present them to the committee at some point in time, would sort of be vetted through, if I can put it that way, through the senior management committee. Because I don't think you or other managers want individual department heads coming forward with something here to the committee that you haven't necessarily had a chance to walk through your senior management group first. So I want to try to pick up on Councillor Hunter's recommendation, but just make sure that it's a nice, clean process as we go. So I think, Councillor Hunter, if it's okay with you, that's the way we'll kind of leave that. And I'm going to move on then to item number five on the agenda, which is 5A, the modernization funding. And this is the briefing note that we have now. I see that the briefing note comes with a recommendation over the signature of the CAO. And the CAO has given us a rather comprehensive kind of argument for the, for the introduction of a internal service delivery review. And I'd just like to, first of all, I'm going to assume that everybody's read the briefing note. And I'd just like to open up the floor for some discussion with the CAO on that briefing note. So does anybody want to sort of start the discussion with the CAO? Councillor Cameron?
I'd like to. The internal service delivery review, how in-depth would that go?
Well, it's really going to depend on the RFP. We just started doing the research on that, and we did find an RFP that, that a similar-sized municipality has used, in fact, just closed May the 20th, I think. And that was a look at all departments to see whether there was opportunity for services to be delivered differently, or perhaps not delivered at all.
What about efficiencies of each department?
And the efficiencies of each department. It's really, it really comes at it from the basis of service, though. Levels of service first, and whether or not those levels of service are appropriate, and whether or not there's efficiencies to be gained by changing the levels of service. And I think that's really, you know, when we talk about cooperating with our neighbors on various departments, I think that's really, the potential exists to do that, but I think it will impact service levels. Maybe not greatly, but somewhat. So I think it's important to have an outside agency take a look at that from a more neutral perspective than any of us in the room can really manage.
I agree with that, yes. The other, the other thing is, you're quoting a couple of prices here, which is 56 to 80,000. Do you know, do you have a, do you have a company in mind that would be doing this?
There are a number of companies out there that do this kind of work. And I borrowed those quotes from that RFP that I mentioned that just recently closed. That was their range that they got in response to their RFP. And there are a number of companies out there ranging from individuals, consultants, who do this kind of work right on up to firms like Dillon Consulting, as an example, who are, you know, they're a very big company, but they do this kind of thing all.
Any relation to the Dillon and Gardiner?
No.
Oh, I was just, maybe that would have been, right. Anyway, the other, so what would you do? Put this in for a tender or?
An RFP, yeah. I think that would be the best thing to do and see what we get. You know, often with an RFP, you can have some flexibility to ask for innovative ideas. Maybe one of these firms will have a good way to look at it. We've heard from a couple of firms. We've heard from the Mohawk College Enterprise Centers. They offer, they offer a lean six sigma review process, which is something that Mr. Crawford from our Public Works Committee had suggested after our last meeting. There was another company, S.P. Maloney Corporation, who I emailed me, and I know Deputy Mayor Torrey also heard from him, Steve Maloney, offering that kind of service. There's lots of different companies out there that do it.
And when we put this RFP out, would we be asking these people to tell us just exactly what steps they're going to do?
Yeah, outline the program in quite detail.
Absolutely, right, okay. Okay, that's all I have, yeah, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Any others jumping in here?
Well, I think it's a well-thought-out plan. I know most major corporations around the township have one here, and thus I know Ingredian just finished last fall, but they just finished one. Let's face it, if you're going to, any company that is in is going to find efficiencies, it's going to affect staff and it's going to affect services. And that's the only way you get efficiencies. Someplace along the line, things get changed. So I know at Ingredian, a lot of things changed there. They went from seven supervisors to four supervisors looking after it, and that was part of the return of review. So I don't, I think our CEO has the right ID here of the recommendations that are going to come forward. We may have them here, here too, but that's just councillors' and mayor's opinions of what we think we should cut or do. I think this is better for all of us if it comes from outside eyes looking at it. And this is a recommendation that comes from somebody that has no ties to us, that's not affecting us, them, or they have no axe to grind the staff or no political gain to gain by keeping or doing stuff. I think that's the proper way to go. I think that's the best way to sell it to your residents of the township, that this is an independent audit that's been done. And if we have to save 4% along the way, this is the way it's got to be done to do it, so.
Any others jumping in here? Okay, so just, I'll take up here because I've got a couple of points that I want to make. First of all, I come back again to this idea of service levels. And I would hope that the RFP, or the RFQ made it very clear that we're not asking them to adjust service levels. Question is, how can we continue to provide the services that we provide in a more efficient way? Now, efficient might mean internal organization, I understand that. But I don't think it means dropping the service level instead of, in other words, changing when we send the plows out or how we send them out, and that kind of thing. Although there may be ways in which we do that that are not the most efficient. And they would, they would, they would pick up on those kind of things. So again, I come back to the question of service levels. The other thing that the CAO mentioned to me at an earlier meeting was that if this request for proposal is structured in such a way that there are no public meetings, in other words, the consultant is not required to host public meetings, that that can affect the price of this exercise. And from my point of view, I think that this is a council initiative. I know Deputy Mayor Deschamps pointed that it should be an open and public process, and I agree with that. But I don't think that that necessarily needs to get down to the level of public meetings. Public is more than welcome to come to these meetings and hear what they have to report. But I don't think it should be a requirement of the internal service delivery review that those meetings be built into the thing. Because I think what we want them to do is look at the way we perform the services we provide. Not the public's perception of how we perform those services, but the way our staff performs the services. How would our staff say, we do it this way for this reason, we do it this way for that reason, we do it this way for another reason? I think that's what we wanna focus on, not the public perception. So the question to me, before I would accept the recommendation, is how do we, as the political people that are, the elected people that have been charged with this municipal modernization challenge, how do we get input into this request for proposals? Is it your intent that you could bring this back for us to have a look at before it goes out? And I would hope that we would, but I wanna ask you how your thinking is evolving here.
Sorry, that directed to me, Mr. Mayor. I really hadn't got that far. If council wishes to have a look at the R F P before it goes out, certainly that's fine. You know, the sample R F P that I have here is, I think, a very good one. I would have no trouble editing this to be applicable to the township of Edwardsburg Cardinal and providing it to you for your input. You know, the deliverable, the first deliverable under this R F P, just so you know, is that the consultant shall provide specific recommendations in regards to changes in services and programs and resources, including whether specific services should be reduced, expanded, discontinued, or delivered in an alternate way. And whether specific services and programs are best delivered by the township, the not-for-profit sector, or the private sector. So that's a pretty wide-open deliverable. You know, it's not just saying, how can township staff deliver township programs better? It's really saying, is there a better way to deliver the program altogether outside of the township staff? To me, this answers all kinds of questions. That's probably why it was relatively expensive response, because it is a very in-depth thing. The only public consultation that's included as part of this is Presentations Act Committee and Council by the consultant, which, of course, is the way to get it out into the public. It's also, they also, having this R F P, a task for the consultant to gather background information and to make sure they have all the data that they need in order to present something meaningful. I mean, I see this as a several-month process, for sure. And quite frankly, I think it's a pretty big deal. And I think council will wanna be very involved in the process.
Well, that's for sure. I guess my point is, if we did that, if we, in other words, if we accept this recommendation and go ahead with executing on it, my worry is that as a committee or as a group, we don't do anything else in the meantime. And then the sort of the cover story becomes, oh, we're waiting for the consultant's report, we're waiting for the consultant's report. And I'm not really prepared to put the whole process on hold while we wait for the consultant's report. So the question is, how do we keep this process alive and looking at other ideas and perhaps even executing on some ideas while we're waiting for the consultant's report? And I'd like to hear some discussion on that. Anyone?
Well, I guess we could have the consultants keep us in the loop on a, I'm just throwing the time out. We'll say on a monthly basis as to what they've found so far, what they've done so far. They could give us a progress report as they go along. And then we would be apprised of what they're actually doing.
Question is, what are we doing in the meantime?
Well, that would follow up on as to what the progress report tells us. Perhaps it has to be, maybe steered in a certain direction. But I don't think, I don't think we can hamper the report, the R F P being done or the review being done.
No, I don't wanna hamper it. I just don't want it to be the cause of us doing nothing. Counselor?
Mr. Mayor, we can continue on, like you're talking about your fuel. It's called fuel management, by the way. We could have Dave look into it, continue on looking to it, the cost of getting the fuel management up and running and so on, so we don't have to come to a complete stop. If that's what you're afraid of, I mean, you want fuel management, okay. Mr. Grant, could you give us some information, bring it back to us at our next meeting on fuel management? I would love to see an energy audit on our two arenas and our town hall, you know? I think there's all kinds of ways, we don't, you know, the services, we could cut, save money by just, I don't know, example-stalled centers in the dressing rooms. You know, so having the lights on all the time, after two minutes the lights go off, that kind of stuff. So I think we can still continue on with Deb's, with the company coming in here and doing an audit, if you wish to call it that. And we can, our ideas that you bring out, like your fuel management, fleet management, I think that's very, something that we have to really look at.
And we do have something in place on that called the C V R O. I haven't seen any reports on it.
So I don't think we, I don't think we'd be standing still.
In other words, okay, so do I have, do I have, I wanna know whether I've got consensus around the table to continue these kinds of meetings? You've mentioned at least three things that we could continue to work on while we're waiting for this consultant's report. Did you want in, Mayor, for sure?
So for me, just listening, you know, to where this is going, I know I'm always a little bit different in my thoughts, but it comes back to, especially the recommendation comes back to fifty-six K to eighty K that it's gonna cost to do the report. If it wasn't money that was given to us by the province to look at these things, would we be using that eighty K to go the route that we're going? I haven't heard really an ultimate goal, whether it's to save a hundred thousand dollars, whether it's to deliver services better, whether it's to cut services. For me, I'd like to know exactly what a goal is before I, exactly what the goal is, what the savings are intended, how broad is it going to be? I might, from what I'm seeing, if the consultant's gonna come in and take months to go through things, we're gonna need another consultant to go through what the consultant gives us back. And to me, it needs to be very, you know, very specific and more of a, I don't know.
Very tight and short fuse.
Something that we can get through ourselves. I mean, eighty thousand dollars out of, or fifty-six, either way, that's ten percent of the money at the minimum that we've been given to work on the project on one consultant without doing any other work for it. So for me, when we go through this consultation process, internal review, service review, the way that we do that, when we ask a consultant to do something, I don't know that we can, for me, that we leave it that broad. If it's so broad that it's gonna take them months to go through it, are we gonna really get what our ultimate goal is? Which, to me, the ultimate goal is four to eight percent in savings. That's the task, the way that I see it. Maybe I'm wrong in that perception. And, you know, reading over the letter again and again and again last night from the minister on what exactly, you know, what it said in the letter. And it was to improve how municipal governments deliver service and reduce the ongoing costs of providing those services. So he asked, do a fuel review. If that's the only thing that comes out of an eighty thousand dollar study and it saves us two thousand dollars a year, I guess we reached our goal. But was it worthwhile, was it worthwhile doing the study? Or was it worthwhile having the consultant do it? So it's, I just think that a collaborative approach, when we're looking at the way that we do this, to me, makes a lot more sense. The continued engagement with our neighbors on how they see the process going forward, the continued communication with Prescott and Augusta on what their plan is to do, to me, seems a very solid approach. Especially if they're going to spend eighty thousand dollars and we're going to spend another eighty thousand and Augusta's going to spend eighty and we're using up just a ton of money. If all three of us can get together on this and do one study that costs us eighty thousand dollars, I'd be much more in support of that. Especially if we can come up with some ideas that we want them to focus on, that instead of being competitive with each other, that it combines some services and that it makes us a little bit more collaborative in the way that they're gonna do those services.
Okay, so that's a different concept.
But let's not lose sight of the fact that the four percent is only for next year, then the year after, then the year after, then the year after. So this has gotta be something that gives us a working program.
A different base.
Right, a different program to work through the years as we move forward. The fuel, the C V R O, these are all things that I would expect the managers are doing as we speak. That's just basic good management. What we're looking for here with the R F P is a way to do things an awful lot better as we move forward throughout the years. Because four percent, or let's say four percent at the bottom line, in five years, that's twenty percent. So it grows quite quickly.
Yeah, but I don't think they're asking us to save four percent per year, per year, per year. I think they're looking for a...
I read it that that's, that's the way I read it.
Okay, that's a different concept still. I just wanna go back to Deputy Mayor Deschamps's point about trying to, well, first of all, he makes two points. First of all, continued engagement with Prescott and Augusta. I mean, I think we all understand that that's gonna be a continuous engagement, no matter whether we accept this recommendation or not. We're gonna have to continue to engage with them. Now, the question is, how, the question is, is there a potentiality to engage with them on a similar type of service delivery review on a broader scale? I think that's the point you're getting at.
Yeah, more or less.
And one is not necessarily exclusive of the other.
And I forgot a couple of points that I wanna add in regard to that. So if I can go back in a minute.
Okay, let's just discuss what we think is the potentiality of engaging in, and by the way, they're not mutually exclusive. We can still do an internal service delivery review on our own. And it would be, in my mind, a different type of review than if we engaged the consultant, a three-way consultant, to look at how we can work better as a three-way group or as a two-way group. But in order to get a consultant working with us on a two-way group or a three-way group, we gotta have the agreement of the other two parties. And I just don't know how long it would take to put that in place. That's my worry. And I don't wanna wait for that process to unfold and do nothing internally while we're waiting for that. So that's my two cents worth on that issue. So you said you had some other points you wanted to make?
Yeah, just two more, two more points. So I don't, for a second, having gone through and listened to the audit, seeing how hard Melanie and the staff have worked on the budget, I don't think that any of the departments are knowingly or willingly wasting any of our ratepayers' dollars to think that we're going to go through this budget and find eight percent in this budget that is wasteful spending.
Who knows the difference?
Well, let me finish. I just don't think that that's going to happen. So I think the only way that we're, for my opinion, the only way that we're going to get there is a little different. It's more of a collaborative discussion. I also think, we've had, yes, we've had discussions with Augusta twice and Prescott once. I don't, I may view those discussions as a little different than anyone else, especially the last discussion we had is all three. I think that that discussion was not necessarily just about modernization. I think it was about arena funding more than anything else. And I think it was hidden in a modernization discussion. But I do think if we can get, there are seventeen counselors through full councils, I think that having all seventeen present for a discussion where we can throw open ideas and have this discussion collaboratively may unearth a lot of good ideas that we may be missing. And if we leave it just to council heads, that those discussions may never possibly happen. And for me, I think that those discussions with all council could bear fruit. So, you know, by doing our own, if that's the path we choose, I think, fine. But I think we're gonna, we'll find the efficiency that we're looking for through a more regionalized approach to those discussions.
So the concept of three-way council meeting, I think, has been around for about, since your letter in, what was it, February or March? And I'm just wondering, like, from my point of view, I don't hear any pickup on that. What's your assessment of that?
So through our last council meeting, it was made very clear that we have what we believe is the strongest C A O. I think I was the one that said that exactly. And I believe that we have the strongest mayor as well. I think it was made pretty clear at the last meeting that we all believe at this table that we are the leaders in this process. So if we are going to be the leaders in this process, then maybe we have to be the ones to lead, not wait for others to come to us to actually push the agenda on them, at least give them the full-out opportunity to join us in some discussions. And if they choose not, then let's go it alone. But I think that if we want to show ourselves as true leaders and the way that I think we all can be, then I think that we need to at least offer them the opportunity to engage as full councils, not just council heads.
So I'm looking for reaction here. Go ahead.
I disagree. I really think we're on the right track with what Deb's trying to do here. Yeah, we, five hundred and sixty thousand dollars, if we can spend fifty of that and maybe another forty here and fifty there to save us and make us more efficient in our own township. And look at everything we have first. And then if you wanna go outside, I'm more than happy. I mean, there's some things that we should, definitely should look at, sharing. Probably water and sewer would be the first. And there's, Prescott needs a new water tower, and we could piggyback on it. But I mean, I think our first priority is our own township to see what we can do. And I think there's no better way than fleet management, fuel management, and having surveys on our hydro and so on. So that's, and that's my feeling. I'm gonna stay away from the other two townships until we have our own. I, I want to stay away from the other two townships until we have our own homework done. And then I don't mind going out and having ideas.
But do you have any objection to trying to go down both roads at the same time?
Yes, I do. I, I want to go down our road first. If you guys want to continue on the way you've been doing and bring it back to council, that's fine, you know? But for now, I want to see us get, get in mode and, and bring us some information back on our graders and so on and so forth and, and fleet management and, and do our assessment for it in our own township. We are the leaders. We know that. We, we're very comfortable right now. And I, you know, to, to take on someone's else's, share their responsibility, I haven't got a problem with certain items such as the water sewers or water tower. But right now, our main focus should be our own, how we can be more efficient. The four percent and eight percent, I, I can't see it. But I mean, if you, they think that we can do it, then that's fine. But I just, I mean, we went from six point eight to zero on our budget, and we want to see if we can save another eight percent somewhere? Well, you can, I guess, to cut services. You know? We've got two arenas. If you want to do it very simple, Mr. Mayor, go tell the people we're going to close the suspension. There's all your savings.
That's not, that's, again, you're talking about disturbing the service levels.
But, but honestly, in our population area, we have two arenas. We're quite fortunate. But if that's the savior, four percent or eight percent?
I'm not saying that we can get to four percent through efficiencies, but there's always...
I'd rather see us get, do efficiency, do a better job on our fleet management. If we can cut our fuel bill by ten percent or, or electricity from fifteen thousand to ten thousand, great. Then we're on the right track.
Yeah.
That's all. And I think we should make an effort, do our own homework first, and then chum along with the other two townships. That's my feeling.
I think politically, we have to appear to be, I mean, from a strictly political point of view, we have to appear to be, and I, and don't get me wrong, I mean, I'm not just doing it for the sake of appearances that we're talking to our neighbors. I mean, I think there's, anytime you're in a talking situation, there's always a potential that something will emerge that will be to the advantage of both parties and, you know, just never was thought about before and, and it comes about as a result of continuing discussions. So, I think we've got to go down both roads at the same time, but I don't, I just don't want us to, I just don't want us to lose any of our own momentum. I agree with you on that point. I need other discussion around the table here on the issues that have been raised by Deputy Mayor Deshaun. Counselor.
Well, no matter what study you do, you're going to get comments from the ratepayers and just spend more money on studies. Over all the years I've been in council, and we've got, I am based for a lot of the studies we've been, I can't think of any study we did that, over the next ten years, we didn't get our money out of. We had a council years ago voted, voted out because we did a study, study to repair this town hall here. It cost, I think, what, twenty thousand dollars or something, the time it took for the study?
Something like that.
But we got a hundred and some thousand dollar grant because we did the study. Who wouldn't have got it without it? This is the same. We've got money given to us, and you can read all you want in the le, in that letter. To me, it still reads amalgamation that they're looking at. I think this study we need in our back pocket. When that pressure comes on to amalgamate, we did a study and we've got our township in the most efficient way it can run. Wherever it shows we save one percent or wherever it shows we can save five percent of our money, we've got this and this. We're efficient. We gain nothing by amalgamating with these guys on that they're going to bring their service to our level and maintain it at our, our level and combine with the cost. And I'm still, as I said in another meeting, there's only one way you're going to save four to eight percent, as Counselor Cameron said, and it compounds because you can save twenty-five dollars this year and you save the next year too. So it builds over a lot of money over the years. But there's going to be a change in the service level. That's the only way you're going to gain it, as far as I'm concerned, because we, I think our management team and stuff, Counselor Dilavod said, we've, we've gotten to cut six percent of their budgets to get it down to a zero percent tax increase. We've got a two-point-eight percent increase in wages and, and stuff every year and cost of living going up two, two percent. You can't come in at zero and still maintain services, let alone save another four percent without changing something. Either you change the number of libraries you have, you change the number of rigs you have, you change the number of swimming lessons you're giving each pool, you change, you've got to change something. Because I think right now, we're a bit inefficient as we can get. Our biggest problem is we're providing all the services for, for three townships. And we're not getting compensated for it. So I think that's where we need this study done, to show what it's costing us, how efficient we are. Then when the government steps in, which I currently believe they will, pressure's going beyond them. Here, Edgar Spurges did this and this. Yous aren't paying your fair share here. I agree, there's lots of things we can keep going ahead on, working ahead on, working, but I don't think there's any major thing. If we're going to pay for a study, we've got to wait and find out what the study actually tells us we need to do. No sense in getting a, an energy audit done if you're not going to do what the energy audit says you to do. So, those things, I'm sure that's, any consultant's going to come in and want that. The CSE said they're going to want an energy audit done, a fuel audit, one thing and other. We can go ahead and do all that and, and have that on the books. But as far as changing how we deliver service and one thing and other along the way, I think we've got to wait until the consultant tells us. And I don't see any political will right now. We haven't for years in, in working with the other team. One doesn't want to pay and the other just wants you to pay.
That's a good way to put it. Okay, so let's go back to the recommendation that we see in front of us, because we've had a good go around the table on, on how to progress. From the, I'm going back to the CAO and with the, the sample that you had in front of you there, is there some way, or in that particular template that you're using, was there some kind of timeline that was put on it or was it kind of left open? How, how did, how did the, how did the thing...
Yeah, this just closed on May the 24th, so it's pretty fresh.
But within the RFP, is there, was there a time expectation for a report?
I, I'm sorry, I can't see that right off the top of first glance, Mr. Mayor, and I don't recall having read it. But I'm sure there must have been a...
I think basically we got to the flume anyway, we could both level the government or aren't going to put any pressure on this until after the end of October, so...
Well, and that's where I don't think that that's correct. Because I think, on what I've heard recently at a couple of meetings, they're expecting us to, to use June, July, and August to get ourselves in order prior to, and to get basically draft budgets, draft budgets kind of, how shall I say, shaped up before the House comes back in October or November. And I think what they're looking for is to have a widespread consultation with elected officials over this period of time. So that by the time the House gets back in late October, early November, we will have had our discussions with various ministries and various ministers to convince them that we have got our house in order and that there's no more, there's no more, in other words, there's nothing more to wring out of it, I can put it that way. So, going back to the CAO, can you, can you kind of put, the, the recommendation is pretty broad strokes here. Can you add a couple of things to this recommendation? In other words, can you put a timeline to it? When would you want us to act in order to get us a report by mid-September? Or is that too ambitious?
Well, you know, summer holidays are a thing. And I, and I, I'm sorry, I don't have a good answer to that, Mr. Mayor, I really don't. But I think that if there's some background information that is required to be gathered in order, before we can even go to an RFP, in other words, we have to be able to sort of give them some background, what services do we deliver in some sort of a list form, where our tax bases, commercial versus residential, those kinds of broad strokes paint the picture of the municipality before we go to the RFP so that the folks...
Why would you do that before, though?
So the consultants have an idea of what they're, what they're bidding on. Are they bidding on a, you know, a municipality with thirty new employees or a municipality with three hundred employees? It's quite a different thing. So we have to be sort of cognizant of making sure that we don't mislead any of the responders.
Okay, so you put together a, a township profile?
Mm-hmm. So, my, my, if council chooses to go down this path, I'll start working immediately on getting the RFP ready. But it's likely going to be pretty close to the end of June before we can actually put it out there in, you know, three weeks to four weeks for responses. And then I can't see that this can be done much before the end of September, probably October. Realistically.
Okay, so the recommendation that we have in front of us is that the committee recommends that council direct staff to draft and issue an RFP for an internal service delivery review with the express purpose of identifying efficiencies that will result in cost savings for the municipality. So my question is, can you have a draft RFP ready for us to action on the council meeting at the end of the month?
Yes, yes.
You need this to be able to do that?
That's right.
Do we agree on a couple of things? It's not required for them to host any public meetings. They'll present their findings here at a, at a committee meeting or at a council meeting. We agree on that? All right, so that's the first thing. They know that, they know that they're not getting into public consultations. Second thing, can we not put together a profile, an Edwardsburg Cardinal Township profile that will form the part of that RFQ so that they're not spending a whole bunch of time trying to figure out who the heck is Edwardsburg Cardinal? And then bring the, how can we get a look at the RFQ before it lands on the council table on June the 24th? Is it the 24th or the 25th? June the 24th? How can we get a look at it before it lands on the table on the 24th?
I mean, as soon as it's drafted, I can set it out by you now. You won't be able to talk about it until the 24th, but we'd have a chance to review it.
Okay, the motion on the 24th could say something like, subject, issue the RFQ subject to the following changes, if we didn't, if we wanted something changed.
That would give you two weeks, Deb.
I'm aware of that, Counselor, thank you.
You guys work this out in the argument?
I mean...
Is it only seven?
Yeah.
Well, I mean, today's the 10th, and the 24th's fourteen, yeah, fourteen days.
Two to two weeks, Mayor, on how you look at it. And to get us to look at it before, by golly, if you do that, Deb, here in this week's way, just...
Well, let's, let's, I mean, I'm looking forward to, to moving this process forward. I, I think we have to be moving on several fronts at once here. Is there anybody that's prepared to put this recommendation on the table and, and we'll bring it to a discussion in a, in a hold?
I'm going to put it on. Say a little bit.
Okay, so I have Counselor Hunter moving, and I have Counselor Cameron second. Now, are we putting it forward the way it is? We've had good calls of discussion.
We're going to have a look at it.
Yeah.
If there's any changes, we'll discuss those.
Okay, are we ready, are we ready to deal with the recommendation that's on the table? That's the next thing. Ready? I'm going to call a question on it. So those in favor of the recommendation?
Aye.
Okay, so Counselor, or Deputy Mayor Deshaun wants a recorded vote, so I'm going to have to go this way. Counselor Dilavod, how do you vote? Yes, go ahead. Dilavod, yes. Cameron?
Yea.
Yes. I'll go to Counselor Deshaun.
Against.
Against. And Counselor Hunter? Okay, and say we'll, we'll go ahead with it, realizing the fact that we need more than one thing here. All right, so I'm going to say that, that that recommendation is going to go forward. Now, I want to go back to the other thing that, the, the point that Counselor Deshaun put on, or Deputy Mayor Deshaun put on the table. And that's the idea of trying to get all three counselors together, all three councils together. And basically, Deputy Mayor Deshaun put the challenge forward that it's up to us to maybe lead this parade. And just so you know, I mean, other than the relationship with, with Prescott, which is strange to say the least, I mean, I have had a fair amount of discussions with Mayor Malenka, but he's been out of the picture for three weeks, so those discussions are not current. But my question is, should we proceed to try to pull something together at the council level, a, a three-way council meeting? Should we proceed to take the initiative to pull that together? I want to hear some discussion on it.
Well, I think, I'll go first. I, I think it's already written in here in one of them that we already, as this committee of the whole, gave the CAOs the direction to go ahead and have those discussions themselves. They could not find the time to have those discussions with the workloads that, that they presently have. So we already, we already gave instruction or direction to, to have those discussions by our CAOs. So, to me, that would indicate that, that we're clear that those discussions should I'm quite prepared to move a motion forward as well that asks for, for that exact thing, for a council meeting.
Okay, so let's get that expression out in the open, that we are on record as looking for, we're on record as looking for a three-way council, three, three council meeting. Is that what you're getting at?
Yeah, sure, yeah.
Okay, so let's, let's put that on record. And you put the motion forward that as far as our council is concerned, we would like, we would like to have a meeting of all three counselors to, to discuss municipal modernization.
So shall I read it?
Yeah.
See if we can get something to go.
Let's do it.
So my motion then would be that the township of Edwardsburg Cardinal engage and ask the township of Augusta and the town of Prescott, full councils, for a formal all-council meeting to discuss and plan for municipal modernization.
Okay, so Deputy Mayor Deshaun was putting that on the table. Does he have a second here?
I have one addition to it. It can be held in Spencerville area.
I don't care where it's held.
It needs to be held in Spencerville?
Yeah.
So you've got a second here if you're prepared to add that?
I, I will, I will amend it to say that a formal discussion is municipal modernization, so at the very end, at the, at the township of Edwardsburg Cardinal Town Hall.
Okay, all right, so there's the motion. Now, discussion on that motion. Now, discussion on that motion. Clearly, we're putting ourselves on record here, making it very clear where we stand. We wanna get all three councils together.
So if I can have-
Go ahead.
So I see absolutely zero harm in, in forwarding that discussion to them. It basically calls them in this process. So if, if they choose to not engage us in this process, we can very clearly stay, say that we have made every attempt to engage our neighbors in municipal modernization discussions. They have chosen to deny it. This makes it very formal, brings it forward. It's not like the discussions where it was, you know, the smaller groups, this brings it into the fold. It, it, it gets historical pasts out of the way, and it, and it opens and shows a new willingness to, to collaborate and work past some of that old history towards, you know, what our ratepayers want, which is the future in respect to their dollars. So see, zero harm in asking.
Okay, so Counselor Deschamps, or Deputy Mayor Deschamps speaking in favor of his motion, Counselor Hunter seconding. More further discussion?
I, I, I agree. However, when would this, when would we want this to take place?
Okay, so can I just deal with that issue?
Sure.
Which is a question of timing. If this motion passes, I would suggest that the way that the motion be handled, if it passes, I would suggest that it be handled in this way. A formal letter would go over the signature of the mayor to each of the other two mayors indicating, sending a copy of the motion, and suggesting the following dates. And I'd probably put four dates in. And please respond to C A O McKinstry. Your choice of first and second, your, your first and second choices of these four dates. We would put four dates on the calendar, four dates, four times. And they would all get it at the same time. That's the way I would suggest that that be handled. And we'll clear all of our own calendars, make sure that we've got those four dates established.
That's fine.
Okay?
One question to that. Respectfully, if, if we're asking for, for all council, would, would it, would it be fair to make sure that that letter reaches the hands of all council? Not necessarily just mayors?
Okay, so here's the challenge of that, which is a question of protocol. I'll let the C A O answer it.
Thank you.
I asked about good mayor.
I, I would suggest the mayor should be, or sorry, the letter should be addressed to mayor and council. You know, I think when you're requesting a meeting with a group, you need to address your invitation to the entire group. And, and the history tells us that sometimes you need to provide five or seven copies of an invitation in order to get a response.
Thank you.
So that's the way we'll do it, then? Answer your question?
Absolutely.
Okay. All right, so the motion's on the floor. You know, understand the motion, as I'm about to call a question on the motion. Those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the motion is, can I say unanimous?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, all right. So I'm gonna say unanimous, everybody's got their hand up.
No, I'm against.
Okay, you're against? But you'll go along?
Go along.
Okay, so the motion is gonna carry. You understand the concept here, though? It's, it's, it's the idea that we're on record.
I know, Mr. Mayor. It's gonna come at time, though. We can't suck and blow. I mean, I still believe we should be taking care of our own-
I think you should.
And I think, we will. I think, I think there's nothing, you know, I mean, okay, so listen. Yeah, all right. It doesn't need to be unanimous, but it would've been nice. But okay, that's fine. So we, we've got that, and we'll get that letter out of here. Now, I wanna deal with that right now before we go on. Get your calendars out, I'm gonna get our four dates. Why are you laughing? You know that if I don't do it now, how long it's gonna take?
Well, it's gonna take long now.
Well, we, we're here now.
I have my calendar.
Okay. All right, so I've got, I've got my calendar out here, and I'm looking for a suggestion.
Hold on, mine's firing up yet.
Okay.
Can I offer one suggestion before we begin looking at calendars?
Yes.
That with respect, that it would be a, a special meeting or a separate meeting, and that we would want engagement from all councils. And we consider that some council may work during work hours. You know, it's, Steve's either day off today, or, or he took time off to be here, that we don't put an unreasonable burden on, on any of those other councils, and that we possibly do it in an evening session so that it accommodates those working counselors as well.
Okay, so we're looking for an evening date. Sometime between now and eternity. Chair's looking for suggestions here. My first open date, and I think it's too soon. My first date is, okay, so going straight to July. Okay, so I'm seeing July the eleventh in the evening. Is everybody open on that date?
Lots of time to respond.
What day is that?
July, Thursday, July the eleventh.
It's open.
Okay, I'm gonna mark it. Can we do a six-thir, can we do a six o'clock start, or should we do a six-thirty start?
Six-thirty.
Six-thirty start.
People have to travel to get here.
Okay, so there's special. Okay, next date, Wednesday the seventeenth.
I'm not here that day.
Port Management Committee.
Management meeting.
Tuesday the sixteenth.
I'm open.
That's July.
Tuesday the sixteenth of July.
I'm away that day.
You're away that day.
I'm away the sixteenth, seventeenth, and eighteenth.
Sixteenth, seventeenth, and eighteenth. Okay, so now I'm in the next week, which is the week of July the twenty-second. I'm gonna look at the twenty, you looking at the twenty-fifth?
That works perfect for me.
Works good for me.
The only problem that I have is my birthday, and I know that my family will be expecting me to be there.
Also, don't do it.
Put it off.
Go to the twenty-fourth.
Go a different date.
Okay, the twenty-fourth at six-thirty.
Maybe they don't want you there.
Guess who's writing the check?
Check for welfare.
Twenty-fourth is good for me, twenty-third is good for me.
I'll make the twenty-fourth work if I have to.
Okay, the twenty-fourth is the second date.
And that was six-thirty as well?
Six-thirty.
If you wanna, if you wanna go to the eighteenth at night, I can be back Thursday, I can be back for Thursday night on the eighteenth, but.
And how about you for the eighteenth?
Uh, any Thursday's fine for me.
Okay, so, so let's mark six-thirty on the eighteenth as another date.
Now, are we gonna keep the twenty-fourth as well?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so we're gonna go back up to the eighteenth.
Yeah.
So you got three.
Yes, now the fourth one would be the thirtieth, the Tuesday night.
Twenty-ninth is the fifth Monday, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, it's the fifth Monday? Well, I'm hoping to get that Monday off. Why not the Tuesday? Other counselors may meet Monday.
Okay.
Okay, so six-thirty on the thirtieth. All right, so the four dates where we're agreeing that we're all available are July the eleventh, Thursday, July the eleventh at six-thirty. Thursday, July the eighteenth at six-thirty. Wednesday, July the twenty-fourth at six-thirty. And Tuesday, July the thirtieth at six-thirty. Now, in my letter to the mayor and counselors, I will say, oh my goodness, we can't give them the opportunity of providing additional dates.
No.
We just plain can't.
No.
Okay, so it's one of those four. Please, please, uh-
Yeah.
Please, please coordinate with, and then there'll be a phone number and an email address. Please coordinate with. Okay, all right. Okay, so that deals with that. That moves us there. All right, now, where am I on this agenda? Oh, excuse me, I just wanna make, clarify, it's eleventh, eighteenth, twenty-second, twenty-fourth?
Twenty-fourth, thirtieth.
Oh, not the twenty-second?
No.
Oh, that's it, okay.
Twenty, yeah, that's our home. Eighteen, twenty-fourth, thirtieth.
Twenty-fourth and what was it, last one?
Thirty.
Now, the next thing becomes, he who calls the meeting provides the agenda. What goes on the agenda other than municipal modernization? We have to have at least two or three points that we can put on the agenda as opening points for discussion, and we will invite them in the letter to add additional items to the draft agenda. What do you wanna see on the draft agenda?
I'd say shared services, start with.
Okay, shared services just open broad?
We have a discussion about the things we can share.
Okay, bring your ideas forward.
That's a broad subject.
Okay. Shared services. Any other ideas or agenda items? What about shared equipment?
Somebody has a gun, they're not using a picture. Shared, sharing equipment and possible shared purchase.
Well, what I was thinking about is, is the concept that was coming forward from county where we have common procurement of fire department consumables. And they're talking about bunker gear, scot packs, that kind of thing.
Yeah, I'm, I'm good with that.
Okay, so there's three items that we're putting forward. You got a fourth?
Yeah, I think so, but just let me try to figure out exactly how to, how to put it together. It would be that because we're having the discussion regionally, it would be to address the common problems that we have and that we're facing, not only just when it comes to, to our townships, but, but maybe how we plan for and apply for the limited provincial funds and federal funds.
Okay, so county, flesh that out a little bit for me.
Yeah, I don't, that's what I said, I was trying. It's a little more on the fly than I. So basically, maybe just a broad discussion of the, of the common problems that we, we face in the three townships.
What, what are those problems, though?
Well, that, that would be the discussions.
And because basically, we don't really have a problem. We see a program, we know how to fit into it, get our application ready. I mean, it doesn't matter how you cut the cake, all these applications require a certain amount of upfront spade work.
Yeah, and, and so we're, we're, we're probably becoming competitive in the way that, that we're applying for them, when we're applying for port dollars, federal infrastructure dollars, when Prescott's applying for water tower funding, arena funding, and, and probably, probably sewer funding, something like that, how we end up competing with them regionally for those dollars. And is there a way that we can not compete against each other so that the region has the best chance to, to get those dollars?
Regional competitiveness?
Collaboration versus competitiveness is probably the way that, that I had it written best, but it's far different than what I expected.
Okay, so regional collaboration, infrastructure, if it, regional collaboration, infrastructure applications?
Provincial.
We'll see how many interpretations we get along on.
Can we have time to wordsmith that before?
Yeah.
Before the letter goes up later today?
Okay, now where am I on this agenda?
I think you're at number six.
I think I'm at number six. Go ahead.
One comment on it, and, and just bear with me for, for two seconds. I believe that having, and the publication of this, it's, was recommended in the original proposal that we, we passed for service delivery view on our own, that it may cause some speed bumps, you know, and, and some public perception, as well as staff concerns and issues as well. And I respect the fact that this may do it as well. I think for, for things like buy-in from, from our public and getting the message out and portrayed the way that we want it is very important. And I'd like, you know, if we're promoting this in the public and we're going to talk about it in, in mayor's columns or, or on our Facebook accounts, that maybe we find some common message that we can put forward for the community. Maybe we can make them understand the difficulties that we as a municipality do to cuts from, you know, cuts in, in funding are gonna result, and that's why we're having the discussions. You know, like, I, I guess what I'm trying to say is some form of a common messaging strategy. That way, you know, I'm not going out and saying something completely, like, completely different about this meeting than, than what you are. And I think how we engage the public from this point forward on the process that we're going into will make a great deal of, will, will help calm some of those bumps and soften some of that to an extent. So it's just, just a thought going forward, but.
Okay, so how do you wanna structure that?
Yeah, I don't know. But, but it's recognizing the fact that, you know, John's said it before, Steve has a different viewpoint. And, and I, but I do think, though, you know, we could, we could easily pull a grenade on it and, and, and make it not happen. And, and I think the discussion, in fairness at least, needs to be had. And we all, I think, are more or less on, on the same page as why we're having it. You know, just continuing to have a common message and, and work together versus working against, I think is what I'm trying to say. I think it might be important as well after that first meeting, that that's part of the discussion as well, that it becomes one common voice, not three different, three different councils, you know, really reporting out what their viewpoints are separately either.
Well, yeah, but you're talking about common messaging strategy.
For us first.
To get this, to get this three-way meeting going.
Yeah, free and post, for sure. I mean, you're gonna write about it in your mayor's column.
You don't know that, but I might.
Well, you do, and, and, I mean, you could very easily, you could very easily use that column or your Facebook account to, to sway public perception. What I'm suggesting is that-
Well, isn't that the whole point of writing the column?
What I'm suggesting is that all five of us are, are on the same page when, when we do that. That way, I'm not going on your Facebook post and trying to blow it up with something different than what you said. I don't wanna, I don't wanna do it.
I think Deputy Mayor Deschamps is concerned about the way that this is conceived with the ratepayers.
Yeah, yeah, most of mine.
Yeah, and I, and to be quite truthful, I agree. I think we should all be-
Let's not blow it up before we have a conversation.
All be briefed as to what's going on, or how's it going on. And you send us your, you send us your mayor's column ahead of time, so we can read that and, you know, how, what your feelings are. I think what everybody in council has to recognize, we need to sit here and discuss how we think about it. But as far as putting it out in the public, the mayor speaks for the township. We can direct him how he thinks our perception is. We shouldn't be posting our views separate from what the mayors are. He speaks for the township, and we have to have a joint voice here of what we expect him to say in his columns about it, so.
Well, let me put it this way, I mean, anything that I would write would certainly be positive.
Yeah, I know. I'm just saying, we gotta recognize that, that we can't have two or three people speaking.
Okay, so, but I think we all understand that, don't we? I mean, I hope we do. And I think we do, I mean, we've been, been pretty coherent, I think, as a council. I mean, I'm very comfortable that we're all working together.
The point I was trying to get at, at stories in the water, you ain't noise after this thing is.
After the meeting?
Like, after the meeting, and, and-
After?
Yeah, we got-
Yeah, we got three mayors, and I don't think there's any way we're gonna get three mayors coming out with the same vision of what took, took place at that place. You've had a couple of meetings between you, and you kinda know what the response was at the meeting and after the meeting. There's totally different perceptions from different ones, mayors of how the meetings went.
Sure, a hundred percent, and I, and I think that, in fairness, that that will continue, but I think that, that, for me, the key is that we be as open and as honest about the challenges that, that we're going to face going forward as we came. Let's not sugarcoat it, let's not try to make it into something it's not, let's, you know, we, we all understand it, we may look at it a little differently, but we all accept the challenge as, as it's been written, and, and let's, let's give it a go. But be clear why we're doing it. We're not just doing it because, you know, we feel like doing it, we're being, we're doing it because we've been tasked to do it. Let's put it, I mean, in fairness, let's put it back to the person whose name is on the letter why we're having this conversation today, which is, which is the minister. I mean, he's the one who's put us in the position to have these conversations, he's the one who's, who's done that. Let's, let's, this is why we're doing it, these are the challenges that we face, and, you know, be very open and honest about what we're doing, and why we're doing it.
I think the mayor mentioned it, one of his columns where the grants possibly being reduced, and I think we wanna keep that point in front and center.
Yeah, that's, that's kinda what I'm...
It might happen with the money we're spending here, but we've been made quite clear to us, we're not gonna have that money to spend unless we tax, and we don't wanna tax, so we gotta try and find ways of working it, so...
Excuse me. Okay, grant reductions, that's the motivation, eh?
Yeah, I mean, but you're in a bit of a tough, tough spot with your column.
Well, I...
I really... ...all it faces, so...
Yeah, the reason we're having the discussions is that modernization letter that we got on March the 20th, I mean, that's the, that is the reality of it. Otherwise, would we, you know, would we be going in this way, or would we, you know, if the funding was staying the same, we wouldn't be having the discussions, I don't, I don't think.
Well, I mean, we have to be careful there, because we haven't been told that these programs are changing, it's just that we have no reason to believe that they're changing.
Fair enough.
When they say they already cut grants, but they backed up on for, and come right up and said this is just for this year only, and made quite clear it was just for this year, so I think everybody in the public agrees anything to do with ministry reports and stuff, quite, pretty well accepted that all the townships are gonna have less money to deal with, so...
Okay, so common messaging, trying to keep positive spin on everything, relate it back to the letter of March the 20th, and refer obliquely, if not directly, to potentiality for grant reductions, and the only way to make it up is either through efficiencies or taxation, and we don't wanna get into heavier taxation. Okay, alright, so we can keep those sort of basic principles.
That's, that's a wonderful message for the reality that we face. I think that's, that's a great, great presentation of that, and I think the average citizen, you know, worries about their garbage bag going up 50 cents and cries foul. Imagine if you told them you were doing a 20% tax increase. So, you know, I think when we make that very clear to them or present that, that they will support that.
Well, I'm not, I, listen, I don't think that we have any, from what I see, I don't think we have any lack of public support here. I think public understands what the reality is. Okay, so I'm looking at this agenda, and I don't know where else to go from here. I think I am at number six. If anybody has anything to bring forward, anything else to bring forward?
One, one, I'll note, I'll make a note, I did look through the things, and I was wrong. I found it posted on, on the committee of the whole portion of, of the township, but not, it wasn't on the committee calendar, but it was on the committee whole, so my, my apologies for that. And as for the paper, I'm assuming that it probably was too, and I may have been looking at the wrong copy, so, my bad.
Okay, so now I'm at item seven on the agenda, which is the mayor's report. I'll have a mayor's report at the meeting tonight, not now. Letter number eight is a question period. Does anybody have any questions? Hearing none, you have no closed session. Chair's looking for the motion to adjourn.
Chair?
Deputy Mayor Deshaun and a seconder, please. Councillor Cameron, those in favor?
Aye.
Motion is carried.